Good evening here, everyone. Tonight, before we get into the regular Finance Committee meeting, we are holding a public hearing that has been scheduled for tonight before that meeting. And at this time, I would like to call the public hearing to order. And I will open the floor here in a minute for people that would like to comment or have questions about the upcoming this year 2013 to 2014 budget. And any of the budgets that are in the draft of this. If you do wish to speak, I would like if you'd come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And keep your comments to two or three minutes or five seconds. So is there anyone who would like to make a comment or have a question about the budgets tonight? Is there any council members that have any questions on the budget tonight for the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the fiscal year 2014 budget. At this time, I would like to open the regular Finance Committee meeting for April 8, 2013. And all committee members are present. And at this time, I'll open this meeting for public participation if anybody has any questions about anything on this agenda. Seeing none, I'll launch public participation. I'll now entertain a motion to approve for approval of minutes of March 11, 2013 and March 27, 2013. Minutes through the meetings.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of copy machine provider.
Okay. Tonight's your topics, there's a memo from myself. We certainly have a contract with Canon for the majority of the machines here at the city. This building and several of the buildings. It was actually formerly Osage. We're now at the end of a five-year contract for most of those machines, all but five of them still have a little bit of lingering contracts left. So several weeks ago, the former staff committee made up mainly of clerical staff in each of the offices that have a machine as well as a command staff from the police and Rich and Alan from our IT department. The goal was to send an RFP out and review the responses and ultimately make recommendations of this committee for our place of vendors. We're asking to enter into a new three-year contract with an optional extension at the end of those three years for an additional two years if we're happy at that time. And the price has been locked in for that full five-year term. Right now, there's at least 13 machines that have to be replaced because the contract is up. We have five other machines that have a little bit of contract left with Canon. We put those on the RFP as optional buyouts. The ultimate goal is to get all these machines onto the same vendor, the same provider, the same contract. As a result of this RFP, we received proposals from 11 different vendors. And after many days of sorting through them and reviewing all the information, staff took, we actually took the vote in one of the staff committee to see who we'd like to recommend to you guys and for what reasons. It was overwhelmingly voted to enter into a contract with Watts Copy Systems for our copy machine lease and maintenance needs. One of the biggest pluses is they're a local company, they're right down the road. We've had Watts several years ago in the past. They provide excellent service, so we're certain we're going to get great service from them. We talked to some of their references and they came very highly recommended. And they were the least expensive of all the proposals that were turned in when taking into consideration the normal monthly lease payments, quarterly maintenance fees, and cost per copy charges. And actually, if approved by the council, we can even buy out those five machines that have lingering terms left with Canon and actually be paying less than we would if we continue paying out those five leases with Canon. We can actually get at least all of these 18 machines on the same contract terms and still be saving approximately $2,500 per month, which is what we're paying now. And that's just an estimate because that obviously includes copy volume that's estimated. So tonight, I'm asking, and the staff committee is asking that you approve Watts Copy Systems. Approve us to sign a contract with Watts Copy Systems for the lease of all these machines. I'll vote aye.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Heisler for approval of the copy machine provider. Any more discussion on this?
Yes, chairman. You said there were 11 vendors?
Correct.
Do we have a bid sheet?
It was kind of hard to provide a bid sheet because with this, I compared a spreadsheet that they'd been on and because there's so many different factors that go into it when we opened all the bids, we couldn't say, well, here's the price for this company. We had to kind of analyze, you know...
It's not cut and dry. I understand.
Right. So what we did is I went through and tried to estimate what the monthly cost would be for each one. Watts came in. Even if we drew the buyouts, the approximate monthly cost would be about a little less than $3,200 a month for all machines. The second closest bid came in at, let's see, about $4,300 for all of those machines. So they were by far the least expensive. And those, yeah, that includes the buyout. And actually, if we would just go with Watts for the machines that are up on the contract and continue paying Canon for the other five, we would be paying about $500 more a month. And if we go with Watts and then buy out all the other contract.
And it sounds great. You save $2,500 per month locally. That's fantastic. I was just concerned that I've not seen, I've spent that kind of money on some kind of bid sheet or something showing who was next, you know, just so we could say that we didn't...
And I can tell you, probably the second one, it's kind of weird because one might have been cheaper on the cost per copy, but more expensive on the other. So it was hard to kind of put all in one sheet to show everybody. But there's another vendor, Williams Office Products, based out of Alton, that came in. They actually didn't quote what the buyout cost would be, but without it, it's about $2,700. Watts was $1,991 without those buyouts. So they were about $700 cheaper. Next was Americom. They're out of St. Louis. They came in with the buyouts about $4,300 as compared to less than $3,200 for Watts. Those were the top three.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Hayden.
Aye.
Alderman Heisler.
Aye.
Alderman Martenson.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. Here, I propose that. Okay, next up, the approval of the electricity provider.
Okay, once again, there's a memo in your packets on this issue. I think we were here at the same time last year talking about renewing. I had called and got quotes from several different providers and Glacial was the least expensive. At this time, after much studying and talking to a few other companies, I think it's probably in our best interest to renew with Glacial, at least in the short term, for one more year. At which time, in May 2014, our contract for the wastewater treatment plants accounts with, they're currently locked in with First Energy. They have been for probably three years. At that time, the whole city, all the electricity will be up. We can go out and bid as one group, we'll get a better rate than trying to do, you know, the city now wastewater treatment plant separately later because it'll essentially almost double our consumption. And we'll seemingly be able to get a better price when we go that route in a year. So I talked with our contacts at Glacial, and again, we've been very happy with everything with them. I know we don't really feel a service side because we just buy electricity from them, but customer service-wise, when I'm dealing with building and everything, they're wonderful to work with. So we have three options of what we can do to get us to May 2014 when the wastewater treatment plant contract is up. We can enter into a fixed rate contract, which is essentially what we have now, a one-year fixed rate. Their current price that was quoted on Thursday was 4.05 cents per kilowatt hour. Now, keep in mind that that cannot be locked in until the contract is signed. So if we wouldn't proceed with that choice Monday night, I would have a new quote for you. And we'd have to sign the contract that night after the vote. They also have what's called a fixed adder program. We tried this the first year with Glacial. Essentially, what it is, is we buy the energy at cost on that day plus a fixed adder of .001 cents per kilowatt hour, which covers Glacial's costs. So essentially, it's variable pricing. In the summer, we're going to pay more than the fixed rate probably. In the months, the low non-summer months, we'll pay a lot less. Based on their historical data, the yearly average right now that works out to be that I was quoted on Thursday is about 3.92 cents. Currently, the year we're in, the contract we're fixing right now, we pay 4.29. So either way we go, we should hopefully be saving a little bit from what we're at right now. It's kind of up to you guys if you want to, you know, be conservative and go fix, if you want to try the variable again. But kind of throw another wrench into this. I was approached by our representative at Glacial and to talk about a program they have, and they have a rep here that can discuss it a little more. But essentially, what they can do is hook up these programs down at the wastewater treatment plant that studies the usage down there and can help lower our consumption. And right now, they're estimating that they could save us approximately $400,000 to $50,000,000, not on the cost per kilowatt hour, but on the consumption, lower consumption, also lowers the cost. So they only offer that program with that fixed adder, that variable pricing model. But what we can do is, there's option three on the back that shows we can go right now for a month-to-month contract at that fixed adder, that variable cost. Let them try this program down at the wastewater treatment plant for those three months. They'll come back to this committee, present their findings of how, just how much they see after really getting in there, if they can save us. And at that point, we can decide either to, no, we don't like this, we want to go back to a fixed rate for the remainder of the nine months up until the wastewater treatment plant other halves are up, or we can stick with it for the rest of the year. So obviously, after talking with the administration and staff, we feel probably the best option right now is to go with option three. Let's try this for three months. It won't hurt. And then they'll come back and make a presentation to us and we can see how things are really going and make a decision at that point. And there's a gentleman here, my friend from Glacial. There's any questions about that program or just anything in general?
Did they give you any examples of systems similar to ours?
I don't have one of the other sanitary districts right now, but he did quote me a different sanitary district that they have. And I can't remember what he quoted. It was the same, the actual city, doesn't it? But they said it was quite significant and that they wouldn't go back to not using this program because they're saving so much consumption. I'll have to get that example.
No, I don't need the example. I just wondered if they gave you comparisons.
And honestly, if we go with this fixed adder program, doing this, this new program is no extra cost. So we can try it out for a couple of months. It's not going to cost us anything if it's not providing the savings that we're thinking it will. We can say, never mind, we want a fixed rate contract or whatever.
It's only a plus for the city to save even more money than what the current state is. Chair, would entertain a motion for approval of electricity provider.
Is the option three...
Option three that's presented on the handout.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Heisler. Seconded by Alderman Heisler. Any more discussion? Question? Seeing none, roll call. Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter. Aye. Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Hayden.
Aye.
Alderman Heisler.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mayor Edgar. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the approval of the fiscal year 2013, 2014 budget.
I know you guys have all had drafts of the budget for the last couple of months. Nothing has changed since we last spoke, so I didn't word it pronounced right, so... Again, it's in total, all funds about $118 million. We went through all the major changes and the major expenditures. So right now, I'll just open it up to any questions that any of you have.
Some questions. Can you give us again, Jamie, an overview of all the new staff that will be added in this budget and the funding source?
I believe there's only two new staff positions. One is a full-time position in the Economic Development Office. Essentially, that was planned for the current fiscal year to be a part-time position. Based on our needs as the year went through, we decided, and that part-time position was never billed. But we're realizing more and more that that really needs to be a full-time position to help in that office. So that would be a full-time position for planner and GIS coordinator. Also, we have an additional full-time position budgeted in the administration budget in the general fund to cover added, or additional responsibilities mainly caused from revamping of our website and its continued maintenance. The huge amount of FOIA requests that come in, helping review maybe possibly the possibility of city court in the future, updating, codifying our city ordinance book, assisting with the quarterly review of development agreements. And the other responsibility is now that the liquor commissioner deals with gaming issues and helping manage the TV programming with Lyndon for the Charter Channel for televising these meetings, council meetings, and possibly more activities in the city.
They wanted a full-time person. And I felt that we just couldn't this first year. There's no way. But they were, I believe, going to be satisfied now with the fact that we'll have, Rich Peppers has stated he wants to do the technical. He'd like to be involved, him and Alan, to start it here. And they're happy with that. But they want a person that they can turn to administratively, the help with the programming and some of the decisions, and work with them. And so they're happy. I think it's going to work out. That'll be another reason that we need an extra position, an extra person for all these various things that she just mentioned. There's a lot of new duties.
But at the present time, we're not considering any additional police. Is that correct?
We're not in the...
In this budget?
Not in this budget. If the crack-free housing passes, I believe you're going to see the proposal to hire one immediately. And as I stated before, I stand by it. As we start to see some, what we believe are consistent trends in gaming gets all going, I'll be very happy to entertain and consider hiring another officer or two once we start to see where the growth is at, where the revenues are at with the gaming. But it's going to take a few months until we start to see anything significant of that.
Did we ever get, I mean, I got, I'm a... Did we ever get a list of all the actual streets that we will be doing?
Yes, there was...
I'm trying to remember.
There was a report like this that lists capital expenditures for all funds in any street project that was listed in there.
Okay, and that's all the streets that we're doing?
Everything's in there except the spreadsheet that Tim and I, that we're still working on. But like for the asphalt patch. But they have, the sheet, the streets have been on there and we just keep adding and prioritizing.
Right. There might be a bold amount on here that says asphalt patch.
But I'll talk about basically what we'll be reconstructing.
The ones that are in there.
Correct. That's the ones we got.
They're in there.
Any more questions over here? Not this time. Anyone else?
So we saved $30,000 tonight on the machine expense, which is great. So there are, it seems like there are places that we can save that possibly fund a police officer. I mean, we're almost halfway there and I just forgot the machine person. Yeah, I don't know if that's where Alderman Hayden was going or not, but I thought we could have found a place to, found it in the budget to have an additional police officer put in this budget. I guess that's just a comment. Don't happen.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the fiscal year 2013, 2014 budget to move to council. Budgets.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Heisler. Roll call.
Further discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to state for the record that I would be voting against this proposed budget. I don't believe we are planning prioritizing the needs, as I repeatedly said. And I have no qualms and doubts that we can use a person in economic development. Preach to preach, want to get the meetings on TV. But we're adding in this budget two additional staff when the people made it clear to me that the police is the most important. I certainly am happy with the list that I see of streets, Mr. Chairman. But there's a lot more streets, in my opinion, that could have been added. Especially on tip number three. But we've, at the end of this current fiscal budget, we've done emergency expenditures, basically, or unbudgeted planned expenditures for a furniture store. We did it for a Kroger ruler. And just, in my opinion, that money should have been going towards fixing more streets because I believe that that's what the people want. To my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have, what is budgeted right now for the Meredith Home demolition?
$400,000 in the next year's budget.
Wait, we have $400,000, Mr. Chairman, budgeted for the Meredith Home. I totally, totally understand what the city administration was trying to do years ago. I totally understand the degree of what that we may be in now. But we've just proven in the past three months with somebody coming forward and wanting to renovate the Turner Hall Building, that a building that was basically being wiped out of consideration, that we're going to have somebody in there. And I complimented the administration for their efforts. And they have jobs and potential more jobs. Now, as I've said before, Mr. Chairman, the Meredith Home building is almost, you know, in an analogy like the boardwalk of our Monopoly board. And to move forward, and again, I understand we have an agreement with the Cook family, but I believe that there's things, if we sat down and talked and said, look, you know, you know, we've got other viable options out there. I even mentioned before in regards to naming the park after the tragic death of his daughter. You know, we're thinking about building a new pool down the road. We could name that after her and that would even give a longer legacy and help children. Then, I'm sorry, but a park over there that is going to really provide no community benefit in the long term for the people versus what we could possibly do. You know, we've had this with this administration wanting to consider, and it seemed cost prohibitive to build a municipal garage and put more parking. These are the type of things that if we could fill that building, and obviously, we were concerned about costs for retrofitting with the Turner Hall, but the initial figures that were at least discussed amongst us seemed to be lower once the gentleman got in there. And to see that building go and open space, to me, we're making a huge mistake. And I could go on with other examples. But the other point, and I'm not looking for an argument, I'm just stating my feelings, Mr. Chairman. But we were told months and months ago that there would be more of an input process. I didn't think that, nor did I imagine that I would see budget workshops like was done in the Cook administration, was done under, people say they never heard of such names. Well, they were done in the Cook administration, they were done under the Brower administration, they were done under Nichols administration. So this is not something new or dreamt up. And we sat there with the staff and we went through the stuff. And we were promised that we would have some more openness and communication. And I was waiting, waiting, and I think there's other Alderman out there that were waiting. I thought maybe we'll get a phone call saying, hey, we can meet with this department head on this date and sit down and go over it. It didn't happen. And Jamie, I commend you for putting everything together with what you've got to work with. But as a representative of the people, when we get inches and inches of paper, you know, with a font size of four, and I understand, again, I'm looking for an argument, yeah, you know, well, you could ask this question, you could ask that question. Well, we'd be asking questions all night trying to go through and understand some of this. So I just feel that it's important, beyond record, that the people understand what my position is, Mr. Chairman, and why I will be voting aye on this budget tonight. And I thank you.
Comments are due, and... We do have a motion and a second for the approval of the budget to move it to full council. Roll call. Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter.
No.
Alderman Elmore.
No.
Alderman Hayden.
No.
Alderman Heisler.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Musgrove.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mayor Edgar.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion's approved. I would entertain a motion on the budget amendments revenue sources.
Will proceed, Bob.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, seconded by Alderman Heisler. No discussion. All in favor of the amendment, the amendment revenue sources, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Motion.
I just want to thank Jamie for all her work. You did great to have him and I very well for that. I thought it was very, I thought it was very easy to understand and I appreciate what you've done. And I appreciate the effort that you've taken on. I know that, you know, it's, and no matter how difficult on the department, we certainly know and support each other. They're all real dedicated individuals. Friday, to cover, and certainly have done that last year, so we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. My sincere thanks to Jamie. She really, this year, coming back and preparing, they had a really place to catch up and did an excellent job. We also want to thank the staff. The department has worked very well with Jamie and I. They were very responsive. They came prepared at every meeting. And they certainly know the day-to-day operations of their departments and did a good job. It was a very smooth process this year. And sincerely, they all deserve a big, big thank you.
deserve a big thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Second. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Heisler. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.